The meeting of the City Revere Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. Mr. Bacilli. Mr. Corin. Mr. D'Angelo. Mr. Mazzoni. Mr. Tucker.
President.
And Mr. Colometto, the alternate member. First matter before the board is the application of 189 Broadway Limited Partnership for Garrish Avenue Chelsea requesting of various variances of the zoning ordinances of the City Revere to allow the appellant to construct a five-story, 58-foot in height, multi-use building comprising 48 senior residential units and 1,600 square feet of commercial space on various lots at the corner of Broadway and Beach Street containing 24,182 square feet at 189 Broadway. Mr. Chairman, we have a communication from the appellant's law firm, legal advisors requesting leave to withdraw this application without prejudice to enable them to redesign the proposal to better meet the concerns of the neighbors and city officials. I believe the appellant's attorney is present in the chamber. Please step up to the microphone, press talk. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Corey Rhodes. I'm an attorney with D'Ambrosio Brown LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. As Mr. Henry said, we're asking that the variance application be withdrawn at this time just so that the proposal can be brought back before you in a redesigned fashion to better meet some of the concerns of abutters and city officials. And we're asking that that be done without prejudice, and we seek your approval for that tonight. Thank you.
What's the wish of the board? There are motion on the floor to withdraw without prejudice? Question now comes on granting the appellant's request to leave to withdraw without prejudice. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
And Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. Leave to withdraw without prejudice is granted.
Thank you very much.
To all the people in the audience, could you please make sure that you have your cellular phones and any electronic devices put in a silent mode? And if there's anyone in the audience concerning the 189 Broadway Limited Partnership that has been ruled not to withdraw without prejudice, so you don't have to stay in the audience. Thank you. The next application before the board is the application of Vincent Giacchetti, 54 Oakridge Terrace, Linfield, requesting a variance of Title 17, Chapter 1724, Section 1724-010 of the Revised Ordinance of the City of Revere, height, side and front yard setbacks to enable the appellant to erect a standing sign billboard 100 feet in height with two-sided display panels 48 feet by 24 feet within the restricted front and side yards of Lot 6 and 407 Squire Road, Revere, provided that the Revere City Council grants a special permit for said billboard pursuant to Title 17, Chapter 1716, 1716-040 of the Revised Ordinance of the City of Revere, or provided that the appellant prevails on litigation filed against the Revere City Council for the City Council's failure to grant a special permit to the appellant to erect said billboard.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Attorney Lawrence Simeone. I represent Mr. Giacchetti, the applicant before you. He seeks a variance in accordance with Mass General Laws 48, Section 10, to enable the applicant to construct a new standing sign as defined under the Revere Revised Ordinance 1716-250 with a projected height of 100 feet, seeking a variance of the 50-foot height limitation established under the table of Dimensional Controls, Revere Revised Ordinance Back when the applicant, the applicant also seeks a side yard requirement varying the 20-foot requirement in the HB District to 9.8 feet. The applicant sought a special permit sometime in May of 2012. That special permit was denied and currently is pending before the Suffolk Superior Court in application case number 12-2102. The board may ask as to why the variance is being requested now. It was determined, as I reviewed the material after filing the appeal, that the Site Plan Review Committee letter of February 6, 2012, which prescreens and directs applicants like my client as to what relief that they want, failed to identify the variance was necessary and therefore it was just missed and so out of inadvertence. This is something that would have been filed simultaneously with the special permit request. The locus is 427 Squire Road. It's Lot 6. It consists of 3.2 acres, approximately 144,662 square feet. It is located in the Highway Business District in accordance with the zoning map and the zoning atlas of the City of Revere. It's present in existing use as a multi-story hotel, approximately eight floors. The property, as to my knowledge, is owned by Logan Hospitality Associates LLC and currently remains so. The applicant and the owner have entered into an agreement to lease a small parcel of land, which I've identified in our Exhibit A. It's approximately 500 square feet. The land is Abutts Squire Road and US Route 1. It is, again, the locus is shown to have a six-foot wide pole which would support the new standing accessory sign. The sign is to have two sides, 24 feet by 48 feet. Each side it'll have 1,152 square feet. Based upon my discussion with the assessors, it would be like $180 per square foot. The assessors would assess the sign at somewhere around $414,000, and the income generated from the sign would be $12,635 a year. At this time, we're asking you to grant the variance, although, again, the case is still pending in the Superior Court. This will clean up that omission made in the earlier permitting process. Answer any questions you have, Mr. Chairman. I have additional photos if someone doesn't have an idea where the sign is to be located, pictures, and it's pretty much undisputed that the location is behind, the location of the pole is to be behind the hotel and is not blocking any residents' views.
Well, we'll continue the hearing. Are there any proponents, anyone in favor, wish to speak? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Good evening. Please state your name and address for your, the record.
Sure. My name is Ron Champo. I live on Stevens Street in Revere. I live actually down the street from where the billboards are proposed. I spoke about this back a year ago along with other individuals in our neighborhood. We felt it would be detrimental to have this sign in our neighborhood. Now I understand it's going to be 100 feet in the air, or maybe I'm misunderstanding it. I don't truly know whether this is increasing it by another 50 feet, if that is true.
The proposed request is increasing it by 50 feet, sir.
Right. Well, to me, that even makes it even more an issue. Our neighborhood, we don't want to see that. I mean, I personally do not want to see that. When I drive down Stevens Street, I come around the corner. I don't think it's an enhancement to our city. I do not see it helping in the economic prosperity of our city in any way. There's been a study done dealing with the economic effect of billboards in a community, and it's done by Jonathan Snyder. It's an independent study that was done in December 2011. I recommend people to read that. It's a significant study on the true cost of billboards in a community, what would it happen, what happens to a community financially. Presently, we have 84 billboards in the community. Do we need an 85th? We already lead the Metropolitan District, the Metro Boston District, according to the Boston Magazine. I think the closest amount of billboards is 68 in Lynn. I think Everett's got like 40 odd. Medford's got 10. I don't think we need to continue on that road to the quest to have the most billboards. I don't think that's something that Revere should desire for its citizens. So basically, aesthetically, I don't see how this can enhance the City of Revere and especially my neighborhood. I don't think it's a benefit to us at all. I thank you.
Could you state your name and address for the clerk, please?
Sure. Ron, Ronald Champo, C-H-A-M-P-O-U-X, and I live at 88 Stevens, S-D-E-V-E-N-S Street in Revere. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Are there any other opponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? I do have a question. In your presentation, counsel, you said feel to note the need of the variance by the site plan review, which, when you were in front of site plan review for this, wasn't it 50 feet? So why would they have to tell you to come in front of the Board of Appeals?
At the time, if you notice, Mr. Chairman, in the, in Exhibit A, that Mr. Finocchio presented, and my client went without me at that meeting, you noticed that Mr. Finocchio on Exhibit A establishes height to be 80 to 100 feet.
The application said 50 feet.
No, I understand that, but I'm just telling you at the time.
Site plan review mistakenly did not tell you because they go by the application.
All I'm telling you, sir, is that the application, you know, would have included a height variance, you know, if.
If that was requested, it wasn't requested on the application.
It wasn't.
I just want to make that clear, that the site plan review did not make an error to tell you to come in front of us.
I can just tell you that the site plan screening letter didn't include that information. That's all.
And that's correct. My only comment on this is 100 feet, I think, is very extreme. I would like to, if this was to be approved, to make an amendment to not exceed 75 feet in height. And that's the only comment that I have to make on this. If anyone else wishes to speak, you have to press your microphone.
I'll check now.
Okay, thank you. The next item before the board is Application 81308. This is the application of Robert P. Gibson, 134 Broad Sound Avenue, Revere, requesting a front yard setback variance to enable the appellant to construct a 32-foot, 6-inch by 11-foot, 4-inch, 372-square-foot second-story exterior unenclosed wood deck attached to the existing structure in the front yard on Lot 23257A at 134 Broad Sound Avenue in Just press that button on there, the talk button, once.
Can you hear me?
Yep. And let it go. And I'll state your name and address for the record, please.
All right. I'm Robert Gibson, Jr. My father's Robert Gibson, Sr. He's sitting back there. Speaking on behalf of him is my brother, James Gibson. We both grew up in the household. My father has owned the household for over 40 years. The household itself, the original house, was built in 1951. It had a deck on the front of it in its original condition that extended out. We have some records of that. The deck extended out 10 feet. In the blizzard in 1978, like many houses on the street, it was destroyed. When the house was built back, at the time, my father didn't have the means to build the deck to the.
Could you keep it down in the audience? You have to keep it down, please. Thank you.
So when it was, when it was rebuilt after the blizzard, at the time, my father didn't have the means to rebuild the house, rebuild the deck to its original depth of 10 feet. It was built out just to essentially accommodate the front door that was in the front there and have a staircase that led down. However, the house was raised, and a patio below it was built out to the original depth of 10 feet out to the sidewalk. It's a concrete patio with a wall that extends up 5 and 1/2 feet from the sidewalk. It's connected to the foundation of the house, so it's one structure. You essentially walk up, I have some pictures if you'd like to see them, but you walk up a flight of stairs, and then you walk into another door because the house was raised. Right now, above the patio was that small deck that led to the original front door and had the staircase that went down. That was built after the blizzard of 78. It was in poor condition. It had to be removed. What we'd like to do is rebuild the deck, but rebuild it to the original depth that it was prior to 1978, extending out 10 feet, also in line with many of the other homes on the street. We brought pictures of some of the other homes on the street. If you're familiar with Broad Sound Avenue, many of the homes on that side of the street facing the Atlantic Ocean were originally summer homes. They were all built around that time, and they're, many of them are built out exactly to the sidewalk. The living structure is built out to the sidewalk. The steps are actually indented into the homes. Our home is one of the few on the street that actually has somewhat of a setback, but did have a deck that extended out to the street. There are a few homes on the street that have that style of architecture as well, all along the same side of the street, where the home is set back a bit and the front deck extends out to the street itself. And as I mentioned, the patio that exists there now does go out to the street. It's, and again, it has a wall in front of it that's 5 and 1/2 feet high, and it's about, I think, 3 and 1/2 feet off the ground. What we would like to do is rebuild the deck above that so that it covers that patio, so both of them are in line structurally and aesthetically. Also, covering the patio would allow for easier snow removal, shading, and again, it's conforming aesthetically with the other homes on the street and with the original design of the house. And again, if you'd like, I have pictures of the other homes on the street so you could see what the, what the neighborhood looks like. I also have pictures of the original house that shows what the original deck looked like, and you could have a better understanding of what we're asking for.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to present the pictures to the clerk?
Sure. So those pictures there are all various houses on the street, all on that side of the street going up and down. I also have here.
You have the plot plan showing zero setback.
Yeah, I also have the plot plan here. This was a recent, recently done by an estimator that shows.
We have a copy of the plot.
You have a copy of that, okay.
Do you have the original home picture?
Yes, hang on.
And while you're looking for that, I'll ask, are there any other proponents, anyone else in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing.
I also have a plot plan here for the, the house in 1978 when it was rebuilt.
That won't be necessary. We have the current plot plan.
All right.
Okay. Any questions from the members? I have just one question. You stated that the, the deck that you're proposing, the old one, was 10 feet out. The new one is being proposed at 11 feet 4 inches, which would go right to the lot line.
I mean, 10 feet, you know, 10 feet was the original. We're asking for 11, but we'd be happy with 10.
Okay. Because that's my only concern, is going right to the lot line. Any other members wish to speak?
So if we were to take it out 10, essentially, again, to explain, it would be in line with the cement wall that's in front, so the supports would be able to stand.
If this were to be approved, and it, my suggestion would be that we would request it to go out 10 feet. You would have to submit a new plot plan showing 10 feet so that this design can be approved.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go on to the next calendar item number, so we'll continue the hearing with other things, and you can have a seat, and we vote at the end.
This will be at the end, thank you.
The next application before the board is Application 81309. This is the application of Joseph DiNano, manager of Caddy Farm LLC, 118 Main Street, Malden, appealing the decision of the building inspector dated May 22, 2012, wherein the building inspector issued a building permit for the construction of a church at 6365 Muzzy Street, Revere, to the Vietnamese Gospel Outreach Ministry of New England. The appellant contends that the building inspector issued the building permit in violation of Chapter 12.60, Section 126120A of the Revised Ordinance of the City of Revere. The appellant further contends that the building permit is invalid and requests the ZBA to determine that the building inspector issued the building permit incorrectly and that the ZBA be further requested to direct the building inspector to issue a cease and desist order to the Vietnamese Gospel Outreach Ministry of New England to cease and any and all construction at 6365 Muzzy Street, Revere.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Name and address for your records.
My name is Attorney Lawrence Simeone, 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. I represent the applicant, Joseph DiNano, manager of Caddy Farm LLC. He seeks to appeal the failure of Ben DeCristoforo, the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer of the City of Revere, in accordance with RR012612A, wherein he has failed to enforce this ordinance by issuing a permit purported to be, at one point, a foundation permit, but now, as our understanding, it is a full building permit, and he did so on May 22, 2012. The locus is 6365 Muzzy Street, Revere, Massachusetts. It is owned by the Vietnamese Gospel Outreach Ministry. The ministry commenced construction on a foundation at the locus in accordance with its building permit that it received on May 22, 2012, from the building inspector. Records of the city clerk indicate that Muzzy Street is an unaccepted way of approximately 160 feet. It is a private way. Caddy Farm has a proprietary interest in both sides of Muzzy Street and owns on both sides of Muzzy Street to the middle of the road in accordance with the derelict fee statute. Caddy Farm also has rights of access through Muzzy Street. Caddy Farm brings this action in order to address what it considers a significant issue to its access to its 24 acres of land and being the only access to its property that has been developed over the years. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to hand two exhibits to you for, actually, I'll hand all three exhibits to the clerk and have him give them to the board. John, please make sure you keep one for the record. That would be one. This would be two. And this would be three. The three exhibits, Mr. Chairman, are a site plan showing Caddy Farm owning approximately 24 acres of land while the ministry owns approximately 3 acres of land. It depicts the land that is owned by Caddy Farm at this time. The second exhibit shows that plans done by Hayes Engineering established that the existing driveway/roadway, Muzzy Street, crossed over from Eustace Street in Saugus over Caddy Farm's land, and that was the only street in existence when the planning board granted a street construction permit in November of 2011. The final exhibit is the Superior Court complaint filed against the planning board relative to the road construction. If you want, I'll continue forward. In November of 2011, the church, the ministry sought to construct a Muzzy Street. The applications submitted by Alliance Engineering established that it was an alteration and repair of an existing roadway. This had to be filed in accordance with the Revere Revised Zoning Ordinance 1716-020. At the planning board hearing in November of 2011, Caddy Farm was unable to convince the planning board to allow its experts to look at the proposed road construction. Caddy Farm had been given no notice of the hearing, nor is there any required, but an opportunity there was missed by not allowing Caddy Farm to at least look at the road and analyze it. Caddy Farm, again, is extremely concerned of its access to its 24 acres, which it has historically attempted to develop, again, the only access it has to this parcel at this time that's developed. So Caddy Farm, unhappy with the road design, unhappy with the planning board's decision, filed an appeal of the planning board's decision to the Suffolk Superior Court, that action being Suffolk Superior Court, Action 12-0346B, and it was filed on January 27, 2012. In that complaint, Caddy Farm outlines its view of the existing and proposed plans by Alliance Engineering on behalf of the ministry about the road construction. We have alleged that the plan is incomplete and in violation of Section 1216010 through We have, the plans failed to meet requirements of the ordinance specifically, and these specific deficiencies cited by Caddy Farm, which affect its access, the need to use this road, have been outlined in its complaint, which you now have as Exhibit 3, Paragraph 17, 18, and 19. These deficiencies having been determined by our expert, Hayes Engineering, and Mr. Peter Ogrin. The plan fails to meet the requirements of the ordinance, specifically Section 12.1604A respecting gravel base. The plan fails to meet the requirements of 121604C respecting Class 1 base course and top course. It fails to meet the requirements under 121604O respecting crown setting below the curb. It fails to meet the requirements as set forth in Revere Revised Ordinance 121605O, where it requires sidewalks to be constructed with a granite curbing. The plans submitted by Alliance failed to meet requirements under 121606O, sidewalks to be constructed with concrete, as well as 1216010, the rules and regulations of the planning board, specifically respecting Section 5B.3, location and alignment of the road. The latter, which requires a dead-end street, shall be provided with a paved circular turnaround having a curb radius of not less than 55 feet. Section 5.3.5, dealing with location and alignment, the latter, which requires that a street line at intersections to be cut back and connected with an arc of not less than 25-foot radius. It also fails to meet Section 5.3.1 under its cross-section requirements, the latter requiring a minimum of 13 feet for a paved travel lane, along with 10-foot-wide paved parking on one side. The plans fail to meet these requirements, along with the fact that it has no sidewalks on both sides of the roadway to the crown. It also fails the plan submitted by the church to meet 5.3.1, requiring 1-foot contours, Section 5E4, which require easements for utilities. The plan, Mr. Chairman, is further deficient, wherein said plan establishes roadway pavement not entirely within layout or center layout, and that the 325.5 layout is not 50 feet wide. Grading is required, not shown on the abutting properties. The grading is steeper than 2.1 in violation with the regulations. There are no bounds on the layout. Additional drainage is required. Drainage is not shown in the profile, and curbing is. Drainage is not shown in the profile, and curbing is also required and fails to show it on the plans. There were also -- the plans failed to have certain endorsements by certain departments at the time of the approval by the planning board. Notwithstanding this, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, this particular road as designed is four feet higher than the natural contour of the property, thus creating, as pitchers and anybody who's up to the site, the road just cuts off at the end of the roadway, four feet higher than the natural grade of the property as it normally is entered into, therefore cutting off Caddy Farm's right to enter the property. The septic system proposed by Alliance is located on the roadway that encompasses Muzzy Street. And, again, if I showed you in one of the exhibits, the existing roadway that is quote-unquote "supposed to be repaired" was actually roadway that's on Caddy Farm's property. Since January 27, when we filed the complaint...
I'm being very lenient in your five minutes, so let's get this together.
Thank you.
You don't have to give us a big dissertation on the whole thing.
Okay, well, since January 27, 2012, since we filed the complaint, there's been no construction on the site until June 14, 2013. Now, at the time, we did not have a preliminary injunction agreement between the parties, but we did have a gentleman's agreement in the early going that there'd be no construction, however, between the attorneys. And that later, we found out that the permit had been issued to the church. Our investigation at the time, based on emails and so forth, is that Ben DiChristoforo, the inspector, wasn't exactly sure if he had issued and believed he had only issued a foundation permit. We now find out, you know, months later, that he did not issue a foundation permit, but rather issued a full building permit. So our investigation, after discussing it shortly after May 22, 2012, was only a foundation permit issued, not a full building permit. On June 14, 2013, the ministry did start the construction of the road. Now, this construction is at-risk construction. There's no injunction, there was no stay between the parties, and certainly, you know, my clients will have to do something with that, given that the litigation is pending. But they also constructed a foundation on 6365 Muzzy Street, which we believe was only done through an illegally obtained building permit that should have never been issued. They constructed it in accordance with the permit issued to them, believed to be at one time only a foundation permit, now believed to be a full permit on May 22, 2012. Now, between May 22, 2012 to June 22, 2012, within the 30 days from the time of the issuance of the permit, no construction was done by the church. And our investigation, you know, was that we found out that there was a permit, but it turned out it was only supposed to be a foundation permit. Shortly thereafter, the parties issued a stay in the litigation. They agreed no construction, no further litigation. They were trying to work out their issues. During that stay, we were unable to settle the case, so the stay elapsed sometime in April of 2013. On June 14, 2013, once we found out about the foundation, I went to the building inspector's office and I looked at the records, and I have the records with me of the building inspector's office, and it was determined that no inspections were done, and there was no card indicating the issuance of a permit of any nature, only the application having been endorsed. So this is quite perplexing. On June 24, 2013, I wrote a letter to Ben DiChristoforo seeking enforcement, asking specifically that the building permit on May 22, 2000, which I now believe is a full building permit, because no one's told me different, that permit should be revoked because it violates Revere Revised Zoning Ordinance 17612A. In response to my inquiry, Mr. DiChristoforo sent an email referring me to the city solicitor. On July 3, 2013, I sent a letter to the city solicitor and received no response. I now understand that the solicitor has submitted documents on July 16 and today, but somehow could not find his way to showing me these documents. The particular issue, Mr. Chairman, is that when you look at that regulation, that regulation clearly establishes that the building inspector shall not issue any permit to a owner of land which abuts a private way, which way is under construction, or which way is not constructed, in accordance with the regulations of the planning board. In this particular case, on May 22, 2012, there was no road constructed on Muzzy Street. The Ordinance 1216120A is brutally clear. It says, "No official, no officer or agent of the city shall take part in the construction, repair, or betterment of any street not already laid out, nor shall the building inspector issue a building permit for the building of any structure of any nature upon land on the premises abutting the private street until the layout of such street has been approved and the street has been constructed in the manner provided in the regulations of the planning board, and unless the top of the foundation of the structure wherein there is no cellar is constructed not less than a grade of 16, and then only in streets where sewer drainage and water pipes be laid." This prohibition is expressly clear. It is not within the planning, the individual building inspector's discretion. It doesn't say there's an exception for religious organizations. It doesn't say you can post a bond. As I say in my permit, as I say in my application on behalf of Mr. DiNano, I had some conversation with Mr. DiChristoforo. It appears that, in his belief, that he was unaware of the ordinance, and that's fine. You know what I mean? Can't know everything. People make mistakes every day. He remembers of no time that the ordinance was ever enforced by him, and that most of the time that the, as I say in the application, Mr. DiChristoforo believes the construction of roads is within the planning board and the DPW. So, as I stand here on behalf of Caddy Farm, given our proprietary interest in this particular roadway and critical access, I ask the board to overturn the failure of the building inspector to revoke the permit and revoke the permit issued to the Vietnamese Gospel Outreach Ministry on May 22, 2012. Since that time, we have been unable to render any other agreements by the parties, so I can't report to you that the parties that are now in litigation have rendered any agreements. My understanding is the church has taken the position that it has a building permit and expects to go forward. We ask you to find that, without equivocation, that 176120 prohibits the building inspector from issuing a permit, and his failure to act should be overturned. That Caddy Farm's interest in critical access to its 24 acres and harm done by the proposed roadway will be addressed in the Superior Court, but at this point, ongoing construction presents a harm. I did, I do have a letter from you, Mr. Chairman, and I don't have a copy of it. I will present it to you, but ask for a copy in return. It's a June 25, 2013 letter from Hayes Engineering, who went on the site after construction. And...
Just for the record, you said a letter from me.
I'm sorry, I was taking a bit. It's a letter from, it's a letter to Joseph DiNano from Peter O'Grane, relative to his review of the inspection of Muzzy Street on June 25, 2013. And he states that, "Based on the visual inspection, it appears that the grading as proposed by the site plan, drawing C1 and C6 and D1 by Alliance Engineering, will be impounding water on your property in two areas at Station 100 and 200 from Station 350 to 450. I find no accommodation on the design plan to allow water to flow in a northerly direction across or under Muzzy Street as it did in the existing condition. There has also been significant fill placed on the driveway to the house at Number 10 Muzzy Street onto a private property without the benefit of an easement. It also appears that the fill may have been placed on the private property in the area where plans call for construction of a concrete wall. We believe the construction of this proposed roadway improvement should cease until such time as the above described issues can be remedied." Mr. Clerk, I'm going to give you this, but I'd like to get a copy at some point in return. For a cost of 50 cents. With that, Mr. Chairman, I, these issues are very difficult, but the building inspector has not responded to me as is required to under the statute, and at this point, our interests are severely harmed by the situation, and I ask you to act accordingly and revoke the permit.
Okay, we'll continue on with the hearing. Are there any proponents, anyone in favor? Hearing now closed, that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Could you please press the microphone, state your name and address for the record?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Villiotti. I represent Vietnamese Gospel Outreach Ministry of New England. Several points, I think, need to be addressed quickly. First of all, jurisdiction of this board with respect to decisions of the planning board, construction or layout of roadways, not issues that are appealable to this board. You heard 10 minutes' worth of problems with roadways, access. All of those issues are before the Superior Court, to be decided by the Superior Court, whether or not the planning board decision back in November of 2011 was a valid grant of Muzzy Street layout and future construction. So again, the board has, excuse me, no jurisdiction there. Secondly, the timeline is important here. After the decision of the planning board in 2011, the building inspector did in fact issue a permit. There was no deception with respect to that particular permit. It's clearly a building permit issued on May 22, 2012 to my client. The law that applies here that is very important is 4815. Anyone who is dissatisfied with the grant of a building permit has 30 days from the grant of that permit to appeal to this board. That time has come and gone. My brother would probably argue, "Well, we didn't have actual notice until June of 2013." I heard him say that date several times. I would point out to the board that part of the record in the Superior Court indicates that his client, and Attorney Simeoni, knew about this permit, had actual knowledge of this permit as far back as October 10, 2012, and an appeal still was not taken. This is an attempt at a second bite of the apple, of back-dooring the Superior Court coming before this board to try and invalidate a permit. The only recourse, I believe, that the appellant has is if he's successful in Superior Court in getting a judgment that the planning board decision was invalid, then yes, then I think he can come back before this board and attack the validity of the building permit based upon a decision of the Superior Court. At this point in time, there's absolutely nothing before this board for which you have jurisdiction. My suggestion to the board would be twofold. You can request an opinion from the city solicitor regarding jurisdiction and your authority to render an opinion on this appeal. Secondly, you can deny this application without prejudice. Again, if they're successful in Superior Court, they can certainly come back and attempt to invalidate the building permit. There were opportunities for this appellant to take an appeal. That time has come and gone. That avenue was closed. When they filed a Superior Court action, they could have asked for an injunction. They did not. That time has come and gone. They're simply left with a trial or an agreement for judgment satisfying perhaps both parties, but when that happens, this appeal either becomes moot or the appellant can reappear and attempt to invalidate the building permit. As far as the letter to the building inspector for enforcement, the building inspector basically gave a non-answer. The non-answer was, "This matters in litigation. We've been instructed not to talk to either side." That was his response. Basically, that's a denial. If there is no answer within 14 days, it's presumed denied. So that would be the reason for this board to have some authority to make that determination on enforcement. But you can't get to enforcement about the validity of the permit until the issue of whether or not the planning board decision was valid or invalid, and we don't have that answer. And it's in Superior Court, we may not have that answer for some time. But in the meantime, my client has a building permit, wants to go forward, but he also has to wait for a Superior Court decision. So basically, everything is in limbo at the present time, and I, again, I would respectfully suggest to the board, request an opinion from the city solicitor on the reasonableness of my argument, or simply deny it without prejudice and allow the appellant to come back after a Superior Court decision. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Any other opponents at which to speak? All right, hearing now closed, that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? Okay.
It's my understanding that on July 16, the city clerk received email transmissions from your city solicitor indicating the case was tied by because of the failure under 40, Section 15, to appeal the May 22, 2012 building permit within 30 days. I submit to you the case of guaranteed builders and developers recently heard in the Superior Court. In this particular case, Mr. Chairman, it says clearly, "This was a building permit that was issued a year before the appeal was taken." It says, the court says, "Where the building permit's issuance did not, within the following 30 days, come to the attention of the challenger." And here, I've told you that my client thought there was a foundation permit. Now I'm told it's a full building permit. That's why we brought the appeal. And the town provided no written notice to the challenger. You should note that we were in litigation, and Attorney Capizzi knew that in January of 2012, yet no notice of the permit was sent to my client. "Without adequate notice of the building permit within 30-day period, it was permissible for the challenger to pursue a challenge to the permit via an enforcement action under Section 7," which he did by letter in this particular case. This particular case, I'll submit to you, Mr. Chairman, on the issue of jurisdiction. Take that issue. I think you'll find that this particular case addresses the issue of adequate notice and jurisdiction. Thank you.
I welcome the rebuttal.
With respect to actual notice and the case just cited by my brother, I would simply point out to the board that part of the pleadings in the Superior Court action refer to the building permit... to the building permit, actually attach it as an exhibit in the Superior Court action, and the pleading that attaches that action is dated October 2000, October 10, 2012. In another pleading, Attorney Simeoni's own affidavit refers to the building permit. Apparently, there was no confusion at that time whether it was a foundation permit or a building permit. Nowhere in the pleadings does it refer to it as a foundation permit or refer to any confusion with respect to whether it was a building permit or a foundation permit. The permit itself, clearly, without limitation, is a building permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? We're not going to have a rebuttal, this is all done. We have given the opportunities, it's...
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You can have that right to ask that. You can request that. The first application before the Board is Application 81307. This is the application of Vincent Chiketti, 54 Oak Ridge Terrace, requesting a height and front and side yard variance to enable the appellant to construct a 100-foot billboard. I requested to amend that so that it would be 75 feet in height. Mr. Tucker has moved as a condition of this variance that the height of the billboard be no more than 75 feet. That's a condition offered by Mr. Tucker. Any further? Any further? Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant, subject to the condition that the height not exceed 75 feet. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? No. Mr. Mizony? Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted, subject to the condition. The next application before the Board is the application of Robert Gibson, 134 Broad Sound Avenue, requesting a front yard setback variance to enable the appellant to construct a 32-foot 6-inch by 11-foot 4-inch, 372 square foot, second-story exterior deck at 134 Broad Sound Avenue in Revere.
I'd like to amend that.
I'd like to amend this so that the front, it would be 10 feet out versus 11 feet 4 inches, so it would stay with the existing line of the old deck.
Mr. Tucker has offered a condition that the variance, if granted by the Board, be granted to enable the appellant to construct a 32-foot by 10-foot exterior deck. By 10-foot. 32 feet by 10 feet. 32 feet 6-inch by 10 feet. Any further conditions? No further conditions? Question comes on granting the relief to the appellant, subject to the condition offered by Mr. Tucker. Mr. Bacilli? Yes. Mr. Corin? Yes. Mr. D'Angelo? Yes. Mr. Mizony? Yes. Mr. Tucker? Yes. This is granted, subject to the condition. The next application before the Board is the application of Joseph Donano for Caddy Farm LLC requesting that the building permit granted to the Vietnamese Gospel Outreach Ministry of New England be revoked and the decision of the building inspector be reversed. Do you press your microphone?
I'd like to get a word from the city solicitor, send a letter to him and ask him his opinion.
Mr. Corin makes a motion that the Zoning Board of Appeals request an opinion from the city solicitor relative to this matter. Question comes on Mr. Corin's motion. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mizony. Mr. Mizony has indicated his concern that he may possibly have a conflict inasmuch as he was named as a party in the original case before the, filed by Mr. Simeoni, as he was on the Planning Board at the time of the filing, and he's requested to be excused from participation, so Mr. Colometto will participate. Mr. Colometto?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mizony is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. The Zoning Board of Appeals has decided to request an opinion from the city solicitor on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, when the city solicitor issues an opinion... Yeah, two years, Mr. Chairman, to the members. With respect, when the city solicitor issues an opinion, will the appellant be getting a copy of it within sufficient time to write a rebuttal?
Yes.
It's my understanding that the documents referred to by Mr. Villiotti were submitted by the city solicitor today relative to the Superior Court case. So as two submittals the city solicitor has filed with this body that is not given notice to me.
Hearing no further business, we will adjourn the meeting, and the next date will be called by the Chair.